Good evening, everyone. It's 7:01. I'd like to call meeting to order. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Item 1A, any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Item 1B, comments from visitors regarding agenda items. One comment I'll make to visitors. We do not have a quorum this evening of board members, so we will not be voting on any action items. We'll go through our normal meeting. We'll do our reports here, reports, but we won't be able to do recommended actions for tonight unless another board member shows up. So no comments. Thank you for coming. Item 2, Chairperson's Report. My only report is we have a public hearing tomorrow night on the budget, 7:00 PM at the community center. And I'd just like to publicly thank Allgrove School, Seymour School, Middle School, High School for their weekly communications from the schools to the parents and now the Board of Ed members. We really appreciate hearing from them. Moving on, item 3, Superintendent's Report. Let's see.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
We are going to start tonight with what I think is going to be a wonderful presentation. We have one of our stellar students from East Grammy High School here. Join us with his parents. Thank you very much. I remember Oliver as telling a sixth grade coming through when I was his middle school principal, and he's finishing his junior year. Okay. I am not going to spoil his fair and fair. He is very well-prepared for this presentation. All I will say is Oliver will share his experiences with the United States Page Program.
Do I have to look up from there? From there?
I'm going to move this up because you... Well, do you want me to forward your slides or do you want to forward your slides?
You could forward them.
Would you like me to do that?
Yeah.
I'm happy to do that. I'm going to get this up for one second and let me just lower the lights a little bit.
Can I just start?
Absolutely.
Hi, guys. So I'm Oliver Ferraro. As Ms. Pavarov said, I'm a junior at East Grammy High School. I've been going to East Grammy Public Schools my whole life. And I'm just here to share my experience as a United States Senate Page. So with me, you guys can just pass this around. I brought a few of things I collected over the six months that I spent in Washington, DC. Some of these include my name being printed in the Congressional Record, an original Congressional Record, an original calendar of business, and my certificate of completion. So you guys are welcome to just pass those around. In that box are my two pins. The blue one is my Senate Page pin, which is only available if you're a Senate Page. And the black one is a Senate member pin, which you can only purchase if you are an employee of the Sergeant-at-Arms. And that's my agenda. That was given when I first started the program. The first 20-ish pages, we had to fully memorize. The rest was just school details, stuff that really helped me carry through school. It's my presentation. So just, I don't know, show of hands. How many guys have even heard of the Page Program? Guys, okay. So that's more than I... Yeah, that's more than I hoped because not many people really know about it. It's a little bit tucked away. There is a state Page Program and then there's the United States Senate Page Program. State Senate Page Programs typically last about anywhere between 2 to a week. Usually it's over the summer. It gives high school students the opportunity to watch the legislative process within their state's Capitol. The United States Senate Page Program is similar to that. However, it takes place in Washington, DC. During my time, I lived there for about five months and two weeks in the United States Senate Page Dormitory at Daniel Webster Hall. I worked in the United States Capitol every day from 10:00 AM until whenever they adjourned. So that varied from 4:00 PM, if I was lucky, to one time I was there until 4:00 AM. While I was there, I was attending school. The Senate Page Program has its own school. It separated from the Senate House Program, or the House Program, I should say, in 1995, where then they created their own schooling. Previous to that, they were... The Pages were being educated in the Jefferson Park area. So it's a semester-long program. They kind of covered that. It just touches on leadership, politics. It's been around since 1829, so it's about to hit its 200-year mark. The first Page was appointed by Daniel Webster of New Hampshire and Henry Clay of Kentucky, I believe. So it's been around for a while. The first African-American Page was appointed in the 1960s. Actually, as a matter of fact, my boss's grandfather was him. That was Florence Walford. The female Pages were inducted, I believe, in the 1970s. And yeah, it's an immersive program. It's as immersive as it gets. No newscast television show will ever cover as much as I learned in my experience. So this is my day in life. So the wake-up was very early and roughly brutal for the first law. 5:00 AM is probably not a time that many 16-year-olds want to wake up at. So it started at 5:00 AM. That is when Lights Out ended, although some of us did wake up around 4:30 to prepare ourselves because we have to be in a student tie every single day. From 5:30 AM, which is when the downstairs hall was open, we went to school up until 9:45 AM. School just covered the four basic subjects, which was social studies, a science, a math course, and an English course. The classes varied in time depending on the Senate schedule, so everything there, my whole life, operated around the Senate. If we were going to convene at 9:00 AM, then school would be cut short. If we were to convene at 10:00 AM like normal or not convene at all, if it was a recess day, then we would have school until 9:45. So work was typically from 10:00 AM until adjournment, which was around on weekdays, 6, 7:00 PM. However, did go later, as I mentioned earlier. One time I was there until 4:30 AM. And then on recess days, we get to go home at 4:00 PM, for lucky. So work, it just was four shifts and on-call. So in the backlog is Senate. I wish I had photos, but we weren't able to take anything back there. So a shift of Pages would be on-call for an hour and a shift of Pages would be on the floor for an hour, and we would alternate each other to do homework, catch up on sleep, maybe if our boss was feeling down. Maybe we just needed to catch a break. We were able to get lunch, go down, eat snacks. We were able to stay well-versed, which is what mattered. And then free hours. So whenever work was off, we had until 10:00 PM to essentially do whatever we wanted. So we were able to explore the city freely. We were able to catch up on studies. They granted us limited internet access strictly for school. However, this is kind of a false reality because a lot of my free time was taken up by homework. As my agenda stated, it took about four to six hours of homework every single day, weekdays and weekends, actually. So mandatory study. If you were falling behind on your classes, which for us was below an 80, you were required to study in the library while you were monitored by one of the profers between 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. This would also mean if you were behind on your studies and you were at work, you would be escorted back home to study. Mandatory chores ended as soon as mandatory study ended. That would just include vacuuming, cleaning, taking care of utensils in the kitchen, washing the dishes, clean the laundry room, just to make sure it stays within healthy-looking conditions because we are 30, 16-year-olds after all. And then mandatory Lights Out was at 10:15. So I do... At sleep, sleep was very important to me. I became... After I got home from that experience, I became very grateful for just about any hour of sleep that I got. And if you notice, I mentioned that Lights Out was technically at 10:15 PM, but usually we would go to bed around midnight. That was because the workload of homework just wasn't realistic to do it in that timeframe that the program expected us to complete it. And out of the large they knew that we were staying awake, it was more just so if a fellow Page did finish his or her homework early, they could sleep. And yeah, the cycle just repeated every single day. So roles and responsibilities. A lot of it was just running paper. I was kind of a glorified paper boy, water boy. We set up the desks for the senators when they were going to give their speech, which would include setting up the lectern and giving them a glass of water. We had to memorize all 100 senators' water preferences with temperature and ice. We would assist carrying bills to all the... To the amendment desk, which was downstairs for us or to any of the legislative office buildings. The Senate has three. It was the Hark, Russell, and Dirksen Building. Thankfully, Russell and Hark are connected. Yeah, sorry. Hark and Dirksen are connected. Russell was separate. We were able to take a train under, but we had to give up our spot if a congressman or woman decided to go in. A lot of the responsibility also took care in our presentation. So we had to wear uniforms every single day. It was a navy blue suit, navy tie. Female Pages had the option to wear the tie or not. Males, like me, had to wear it every single day. We had to keep our hairs, our hair within a certain length. We had to be clean-shaved in our rooms. We had daily room inspections every single day while we were in school. Our beds had to be made a certain way. Our closets had to be organized a certain way. You weren't allowed to leave anything in the bathroom, anything out on your desk. So it just built a lot of character for us, a lot of attention to detail, which you don't really pick up on at the start. It was a little bit bothersome, but I'm very grateful now because now I can apply those skills that I learned in my day-to-day life here. Grades. If you fell below a 75, you would have two weeks to correct that grade. If not, you would be removed from the program. Residency. That was usually the easiest. It was just time management, getting along with the Pages. We all come from different corners of the country. Each state can only send one page, so there was no one that really had the same experience as you growing up. So it was really just a matter of learning to deal with people who you were not used to at all. Sergeant-at-Arms employment policies. That was just, you're not allowed to post anything. As you notice, I don't really have many photos because I'm not allowed to have a phone one. And the few times we were allowed to carry cameras, we were allowed to take photos of various specific angles or places. It was very sensitive. So significant events is kind of my highlight. I tried to keep these kind of in order, but so I was there for the passing of Senator Feinstein in mid-September. I was there for the start of the Israel-Gaza conflict. That was over Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend. I was able to meet President Zelensky of Ukraine, amongst other celebrities. Like I met Roy Darrah Johnson, Bill Nighley Science Guy. I have a photo with Mark Ruffalo, the Hulk. I was on the House floor when the vote to remove Speaker McCarthy occurred. That was arguably one of the most historic events I witnessed because it's the first time our country's ever had that happen. I got a tour of the White House. I was able to meet the Vice President. I had the Senator Tuberville nominations. So that was a topic that occurred. He had a disagreement with some of the policies, health policies regarding the military at the time, and he declined several military nominations. And it was just one night where a senator from Alaska and a senator from Iowa decided to just do one big push and do all the nominations at once. And that was when we were there until 4:30 AM. I was very close to watching the sunrise from the Capitol, which is supposed to be on a Page's bucket list. I had snowfall in Washington, DC. Obviously, here it's kind of common for us every winter. Virginia doesn't really experience much snowfall, but I was able to actually go sledding on the hill. And school field trips. They did... They were aware that they gave us a hard time with the schoolwork. It was very rigorous. But when they got the chance, they would take us on very, very unique field trips, which I don't think I would ever have the opportunity to see if I was there. So this is a house of the governor's mansion in Colonial Williamsburg. We also went to Jamestown. We went to Mount Vernon. We went on a field trip to Philadelphia. And they would take us to local sporting centers around Washington, DC, along with all the monument tours, the typical tourist attractions. So let me just join my first photo. That's me in my Page suit, actually. It's very similar to this. It was just very basically a suit. So my motivation to join. I would... I planned on going into the military after high school, whether that's enlistment, ROTC, or my journey is to go to the Air Force Academy. So I saw this as a great opportunity to serve my nation, though not as great as what I aspire to do. It is still a sacrifice, which I made. And more importantly, a sacrifice of my parents. They're here with me. And I know it wasn't hard, especially my mom, to kind of have one of her sons missing for six months. Representation. So obviously, I'm Hispanic. I come from immigrant parents. I'm first generation to be born in the United States. So it was an honor to represent my community ethnicity-wise, but I was also very proud to represent the state of Connecticut. I was the only Page from the state of Connecticut. I was the only kid, I think, in the past 12 years from Connecticut to be from Hartford County. And I was proud to represent East Grammy. So I had... It was just an honor to really put forth what we represent as a town. And then, yeah, being part of something much bigger than myself. I'm big into sports. I really have done football and track. I don't believe in just the power of one person. I like everyone working together. And I was part of the world's greatest delivery body for six months. So learning experience. Most of the learning was not academic, believe it or not. The school there was rigorous. Thankfully, the East Grammy High School prepared me very well for that school, for the level of academics that they had there. But it wasn't. It was really learning to adult, as they called it, learning how to budget money, budget time, how to deal with people that might disagree a lot with you, especially with roommates. I had three roommates. At the start, it was a little rough, but at the end, they ended up being like three additional brothers that I have. Deal with change. I mean, I've been used to eating my mom's food the whole of my whole time. Very sudden switch to cafeteria french fries for lunch every day and a pack of salami for dinner. It was a lot, a lot to deal with. Cultural diversity. I never met an Alaskan until I went to the Page Program. I've never met people from outside our time zone, really. So it was just dealing, learning about different cultures, how even though we're one country, even if you're from the state over, how much can change and how the people around you, the school system, the environment that you're in can really affect the way that you are as a person. And yeah, I mentioned learning how to go out. It was a little rough for me at the start. So challenges faced. I did struggle a lot if it wasn't for my support systems back at home. I wrote letters back to school. I'd call my parents every day when I got out of work. I'd call my friends. If it wasn't because of that, I wouldn't have stuck through with the program, I must say. I get a lot of credit for going to it, but it wasn't just me. I mean, it was a lot of people that had my back. I mean, Ms. Pendergast was the one that got me into the program. I never would have heard about it if it wasn't because of her... If it wasn't because I heard Mr. DeMello at the start over the summer, working with me, trying to figure out what this program even was, how my school would look like there, how school would look like when I came back. None of this would have been possible. Amongst those, there was also nepotism. That is a big challenge faced, especially within the world of politics today. It was different. It was different. It's definitely something that I never had experienced here. And at the start, it was a little shocking, but I overcame, you know? I realized these people, just because they were born into a different family than me, doesn't make them more or less than who I am. And being away from friends and family for a while, these guys here, this was my shift. These guys were my family. You know, these were my brothers and sisters. These were the people who we cried with, who we laughed with, who we smiled with, who we were with every single day from 5:30 AM until 10:15, hopefully. Yeah, that's my parents visiting me over Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend. So out of East Grammy Health, it prepared me very much academically. The school, the classes that I took compared to the rigor that I had down there. It taught me community. That was, I think, the biggest aspect that helped me out, being a small town, always being there, learning to always help your neighbor, always help a friend. That aspect helped me a lot there. I was kind of known as the guy like, if you needed a pencil, you needed a pen, come to me. I picked that up here from hearing people in the community. Create opportunity on the go. It was like, you know, you meet someone. You probably won't ever see them again, but you take a business card. You write down a number. You keep in contact. I learned that here through just learning how to network before I went. And work with abnormal conditions. You know, it's not normal. They tried to tell us that they know what we're going through, but it's not. It really... It's a very select few group of kids that knew what it's like to do that program. But again, it brings it back to the sense of community that I learned in East Grammy, where we kind of just thought of each other as one big group because to a point, we knew that we were all alone. We knew that we didn't have our moms or dads or brothers. It was just us, similar to here, where although we might be a small town, together we can do great things. Application process. It was rather easy for me. I know some senators have in-person meetings with some of their Page applicants. For me, it was a simple essay, resume, and my grades, essentially. Some of my background. So I was a Parks and Rec volunteer football coach last year for Ms. Van Neil. I also rep for them. I was a member of the Civil War Patrol. It's an Air Force Auxiliary Program. They're hosted by the National Guard Base over at Racket Airport. Top 10 of the graduating class. So academics was a really big thing for me. A lot of these kids focused primarily on academics. So I also play football in the fall and I do track in the spring. And I'm also class president. So that leadership, I expect. Learning how to work with people who might, again, disagree with you, learning how to lead a group of people who even if you agree with in the face of adversity, it's difficult. Under stress, someone... Everyone has their limits. So personal reflection. I became very independent. I learned how to deal with problems on my own. I learned that not always I can call mom or dad to kind of bail me out on something. I learned to cope with hardship. I mean, for a while, for the first two months, all I could think about was going home. So I learned to change that mentality rather than I have to be here. I get the opportunity and the blessing to be here. Teamwork and friendship. It was one of the, I consider so far, the hardest five months of my life from all aspects, academic, personal. But I'm very glad I had the opportunity to meet and work with the people that I did because I'm very aware that not everyone gets that opportunity. And although for me, I felt partly miserable for half of it, I always tried to live that life with a sense of pride because I know I, sometime I was living so downstream. And then, you know, I have a couple pictures of my experience. That's me with Mark Ruffalo. These are my roommates. This is me with Senator Murphy, my sponsoring senator. This is outside the Oval Office in the White House. This is a photo from the top of the dome in the Capitol. And this is me from my roommate in the White House. Open to any questions.
I'm impressed with what you've done. I'm sure your parents are or should be very proud of what you've done. It's quite an accomplishment for high school students. I think you've done part of your basic training for the Air Force Academy. And, you know, you went through, you went through a lot. It was a good experience for you. I guess one question I have, maybe a little bit of a personal one thinking about all this. Do they at least give you some stipends for everything you've done for five months of expenditures and things now?
Yes.
Don't have to tell me what it just... Would hope all that you do, you get something for.
So while I was down there, the sponsoring Senator pays for your initial five suits, which is your required uniform. The school is paid for by the United States Senate. It is technically an independent school. It's not under DC public school systems. We do receive paychecks. Approximately $850 of that was automatically deducted for rent. And then the rest was free to whatever we...
Oh, you had to pay for your rent?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that was automatically deducted by the Sergeant-at-Arms. But yeah, me and we're all living in the same dormitory sponsored by the Senate.
That's taxes.
It's quite an experience. Anyone else, any comments, questions?
You opened up and said, "Has anybody ever heard of the Page Program?" I raised my hand, but if you said, "Do you know a lot about the Page Program?", my hand would have gone down.
Agreed, yes. Like, I've heard of it, but I didn't know all this. This was awesome.
This was very, very enlightening. I had to blink back some tears when you talked about your parents and your mom over there. You know? When you talked about your homework, was that your academic homework or homework relating to your responsibilities as a Page, or both?
It was both. Primarily, it was academic homework, obviously because we were limited by time constraints because of the Senate. So where here, we would spend 45 minutes of doing some schoolwork, followed by lecture. There, it was just lecture and then they would give us large assignments that that would be due the next day, which were meant to fill in the missing three to five hours of school. Other homework, of course, was like taking care of our living spaces, taking care of our uniforms, all that. There was like no one to help us at all other than the fellow Pages. pages.
What do your peers think? Because for you, I mean, that's a lot of responsibility at your age. Do they kind of get what you're talking about? Are they like, oh, man, how did you do that? You know?
A lot of my friends, when I called them the first time and kind of like described to them what was going on, and I was like, guys, this landline's recorded, by the way, because I don't even have my cell phone. They kind of all told me like I was insane. But then when I came back, everyone was like, wow, like, you really did it, you know?
That's unbelievable.
Even like, even though we're kind of young, and, you know, probably you wouldn't think that's what a 16-year-old thinks, they were all kind of with a sense of respect. They said like, you, you really did it. You kind of pushed through it. But some of them were like, are surprised, because we didn't think that you'd be able to do it. But yeah, I do got to say, I know that the program definitely isn't for everybody. I know that it takes a lot of grit. But I think the most important part was having a support system back home. That's what a lot of the successful pages that were with me also had. That's kind of one thing that we all share in common.
Were there any that didn't make it through the whole program?
We only lost one, actually. Typically, a page class loses between four to six. I'm in communication with the page that replaced me, and he said they're already down five.
And how many are there at a time?
Thirty. Thirty per semester. And yes, we only lost one page.
They lose them early, early in the week.
We lost him about in the third week of October. So leaning towards halfway through the program. Yeah, usually, most of the pages drop out within the first month. The first month is designed to be like that. It was the hardest. They told us later on, it's just to get rid of the people that won't make it through. A lot of people leave. It's not necessarily that they're removed from the program. A lot of people just can't handle it or would rather be back home. The one page that we did lose, he was removed from the program sadly. But that's just the reality that we had to deal with. If you couldn't follow the code of conduct, we knew there was no second tries, no mistakes. It wasn't acceptable. That was kind of part of being some of the elite, I guess. You can't have a mistake. You can't mess up in any aspect, whether that's homework, or the resident life, or at work.
And you didn't need a cellphone. That's what intrigues me. I'm impressed. You could do all this, and you didn't have to have your cellphone. That's weird today.
Yeah, it really, it went to show, I thought that too at the start. I was like, I don't know how I'm going to make it through without my cellphone. I realized the first couple weeks how reliant I was on technology.
Even on weekends, you had no cellphone on weekends?
No, sir. We were only given cellphones. Well, we were given cellphones that were just tracked and used for emergency calls when we were allowed to go out on our free time. But my personal cellphone was kept in the safe unless I was traveling or going to be away from the dormitory for more than 24 hours. So even on, say, weekends, when I could be checked out by a friend's parent, for example, my roommate was from Arlington, Virginia. So sometimes his mom would check us out for dinner. We weren't allowed to have our cellphones.
Well, it's an understatement to say how proud we are of you. And no doubt, you're going to continue to do great things. And the fact that little Elise Granby had, you know, the representative, and someone who is of such, you know, great character and standing, so we're so proud of her. Thank you, thank you to your parents. And you know Mr. DeMello, you might not know Courtney Printagast, who's the high school counselor who's here to also support you.
Yeah, thank you again for taking your time out of your meeting, for allowing me to share my experience with you guys.
Thank you.
It's a honor to have you.
That was awesome. Thank you so much.
Can I just see the?
Oh, yes, of course. That's the Senate page.
Okay, I would like to, I know you guys need to continue with your meeting, but I would like to say thank you to Mr. DeMello and Courtney Printagast, and Ms. Babaro, and all of you guys for the support and the nice opportunity you provide to Oliver. Without your support, we were not going, we were not able to make it. You know, I mean, we are immigrants, and we know no one. It is thank you to you guys that he was given the opportunity. So I want to say thank you very much, and I really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. So, Mr. Kirk, I think we're all set. If you want to close up, I think that's it for presentations for tonight. And you are welcome to remain for the rest of the meeting. But if you want to leave, certainly is not barred, by your means.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. DeMello, just your picture.
I got a picture along with yours.
I think we can end on that note. What do you think? Okay, moving down, the agenda, item 3B, Zonar Update. We have a number of staff members with children, district, logged into Zonar for some testing. The feedback right now is hot and cold. I think there was the idea that it would be tracking a child versus a bus. There's a little bit of a delay sometimes in the tracking app.
People thought it would track a child? How would it track a child?
That doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah.
I mean, if the child gets on the wrong bus, then yes, it's a problem. But you're tracking buses.
We're tracking buses.
Right.
You know, if a bus, if we change a bus before the sinking period overnight, we can't change that on the app. So we're still, this isn't necessarily specific to Zonar, because I have spoken to other districts that use a different system, and it's kind of, it's very similar. So we're still exploring.
Guess I got confused again. So if I had called in and said, we're getting on this bus instead of the bus we're supposed to be on? Is that what you're talking?
So for instance, today, we had one bus that broke down. So we had to switch buses. Even if we went into the system to change it, it sinks overnight. So if you're on the app looking for a particular bus, you wouldn't know those last-minute changes. We would be able to set things ahead of time, like for the calendar year.
We'd be able to track the broken-down bus.
Correct.
Okay.
No, or the new bus they're on.
Right, right.
Right.
I got it.
Which is understandable.
So, so those are some, some of the things, a little bit of the feedback. And, you know, we're still kind of testing it. I know I have it on my phone. Mary has it on hers. And, you know, we're also, you know, trying to work through some, some kinks and such.
With all the apps out there, there's money to be made, like someone come out.
Seriously, I need to.
They're a good working app.
There is a better app. There are better apps out there. This one, which happens to be one that, the M&amp;J one.
Yeah, connected buses, you know, yeah, you've got food apps that are terrific. Somebody is going to put this together soon.
Because Mary, when we were emailing, I, I think I, I might have misunderstood. When I've been on it, I can't just go on and just go on and see where the bus is. Were you saying you can?
I can.
See, I, like, you see the buses at all times?
I can go on the map, but, no, not at all times. It updates really sporadically.
You can only see it an hour before school, and then two hours after school, and nothing in between. So you only have it for a period of time.
I don't need any time. I mean, while my.
I could see it on the map. I could see it moving on the map, but it would like sort of stall out. And just when I had said, like, this isn't a value of me personally, then this morning, it asked me to re-log in, and I was like, did I miss the bus yet? Is the bus here or not? And I really wished I had it this morning, because it is somewhat helpful. So.
I did too, but we were the broken-down bus, so no one helped me. So, okay, so you can. All right, I got to play. Well, I got a new phone. I went from an Apple to a Droid, so I'm actually curious now to play with it on the Droid versus an Apple, see if there's any difference. So I'll let, I'll let you know.
Great, thanks. Last day of school. Our last day, we had two snow days. So I was going to say May 14, but that would be inaccurate. It would be June 14. June 14 is the last day for our students, and that is a Friday. And the last day for our teachers is the following Monday on June 17. We are in spring, and we are in the throes of beginning our end-of-year activities. You'll see on blogs and websites, newsletters, the host of activities coming up in each of our schools. Of course, we always, you know, our board members are always, you know, invited to come join us at any of our functions. We do have one activity that I know I purposely talk about and always share with you. This is our annual retirement and 20-plus service recognition, which will be held on May 9 at 6:00 PM, and that's at, at Lenote. If you would like to join us, please kindly just at least a note. We have a few retirements and resignations to share tonight. The first is the resignation of Ms. Hannah Stack. Hannah was our accounts payable. She's, she was only with, with us for about a year and a half. However, she was very instrumental in moving our, particularly our student activities from, from multiple accounts and systems and paper to an online system. She really took a hold of that. And she has moved out of education into corporate. You know, we certainly, you know, wish her the best. The second is Josiah Friedberg. Josiah has been with us. He'll be finishing, completing his 10th year with us. He's a library media specialist at the middle school and high school, and all things technology. He introduced and bolstered our AP Computer Science class. We have great enrollment in that course. And he has mentored many students through the capstone projects. Additionally, he's created kind of a green screen for students to learn recording and how to record, like in a recording studio, and supports all students after school. I think Josiah loves coding just as much as the kids. So, you know, he could often be found, you know, after school working with kids with some kind of individual interests, you know, to support them. So we wish Josiah the best. Additionally, we have the retirement of Susan Downs. Susan is completing her 24th year with us as an English grade nine through 12, including AP, Advanced Placement Literature for the last 21 years. She has also served as a class advisor for three classes, the classes 2005, 2009, and 2014. She also was part of the National Honor Society Selection Committee for 12 years. She took students to the Connecticut Youth Forum as the advisor for 10 years, Gay Straight Alliance Diversity Club Advisor for three years, literary, literary magazine for two years, newsletter advisor, co-advisor for two years, and the School Improvement Committee for four years. So we wish Susan all the best in her retirement. Okay, I'm going to move down to 3B, Presentation for Public Hearing. As you all know, Mr. Passwitz, may I just?
That's the same thing happened the other night, right?
I made a few changes, because I do have one thing that I would like to share from our workshop. I mean, you have the whole, these are even all my notes. I'm a very big into scripting. So I actually included all my notes. This presentation is, you know, the, the exact or very similar to the presentation provided to the Board of Finance and the one in our last board, board workshop, with one difference. We have another pending retirement. So at our last workshop, we were looking at, I just thought of something. We were looking at a 6.83. Mary and I have spent some time with this new pending retirement, and we are at a 3.6, a 3, a 6.38. So from a 6.83 at our last board, board workshop to a 6.38.
And you've changed that slogan?
I have. So everything represents, which should, right?
Yeah.
Everything represents that. That is not to say you will not be without reductions, because I, between yesterday, or between today and tomorrow, I have provided seven staff members with non-renewal notices and meetings with them. So I guess, without any vote, this will have to remain the superintendent's budget for tomorrow night.
Correct, but there hasn't been any discussion from the board to change it.
We did speak at the workshop.
Of, of, of voting to endorse that number. Yeah, there hasn't been any, anyone not favorable to doing that, even though we haven't agreed to it.
Just, I'm sorry, just 6.83?
Well, it's now 6.38.
No, I know, but what you're, you're saying there.
We were going to agree to 6.83 with consensus anyway.
So I, I will leave it with the language I had used previously, then.
And I could speak to that comment of, you know, about the board's position.
Well, I'm sorry, you're gonna, you're gonna suggest that 6.83?
6.38.
6.38's a new number.
Right. But you're gonna say it's 6.83, but now it's 6.38. Because that's what we've endorsed, 6.83.
Right, but we didn't vote on it. This is a lower number. We're going to not endorse it?
No, of course, but we can't. But we can't.
But we never voted on the 6.83.
We never voted on the other one either.
That was a bunch of workshop.
But it is what we worked on, is all I'm saying. I think the board is on the same page with that. We haven't had any objections from board members in.
No, I don't think so either. Right, I don't think so either. I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't know if.
Well, I can't tell the community that the board has approved it. That's all. Right? I can't say they approved it.
Correct. Right.
Still superintendents. And we've been looking at positions and looking at changes, and we still have some time. I don't think that'll be a problem. I mean, the good thing is the number went down from 6.83 to 6.38.
Going, I guess, in the right direction, I guess.
So otherwise, this will be the presentation for public hearing. Our conversation at the board workshop was looking at a recommended 6.83. That number is now, that percentage is now a 6.38 with this new pending retirement. So there is one place in here where I do say the Board of Education. I will change that back to the superintendent. And like I said, I'm very big with scripting, so if you're watching tomorrow, you can follow along, probably word for word. Because I'm pretty intentional in my statements. I'm happy to give you a few minutes if you have any questions.
Do you have another cloud of money we could work with? If not, I have no further questions.
Doing the best I can.
I know you are. Anyone else? Okay, continue this.
3G, essentially, I kind of worked that into this presentation. We do have seven teachers who have or will receive non-renewal notifications. This will be hopefully, we have a quorum for a Board of Education meeting Thursday at 7:00 at the high school library, as this room is not available and all rooms not available. And essentially, the purpose of the meeting is just to approve the non-renewals of those seven individuals due to budget constraints.
Does that include the reductions as well as the non-renewals?
It does not. It's only non-renewals of non-tenure. So anybody in district that is, actually, there is one included with a reduction, who's also a non-tenured staff member, Ms. Griffin.
Okay, within the number of seven?
Within the number of seven. As I think I shared, I felt it important for me to be able to speak to each of them and let them know the process. And then Thursday night, hopefully, we have a quorum and can hold that meeting. I will ask the, the board for a motion to approve those non-renewals, and then a follow-up letter will go to those individuals.
And if anything changes Tuesday night, tomorrow night?
Anyone who receives a non-renewal, they can be called back. That happens. Or they will not continue with employment. Is that what you mean?
Regardless of what happens at the end of tomorrow night's meeting, these people will receive non-renewals.
Correct. Correct. Because nothing is, and this is what I shared with them, nothing is definitive until the budget passes, until the.
The vote.
Correct, until the vote. So that's late May, being respectful of their professional.
You're preparing them for the possible eventuality.
Sure, Passwitz, that's all I have under my report.
Okay, thank you. Item 4, Recommended Actions. I guess we'll, we have to pass on voting on them. We might as well, with board approval, pass on even discussing them, so we don't have to discuss them again. We'll discuss them and vote on them. Any objections to me doing that? Okay, moving on to item 5, Agenda Items for Future Meetings, School Spotlights, Cave Award, and Capital Plan Requests. Any other agenda items? Okay, item 6, Comments and Visitors. Comments? Okay. Motion for German.
You know, before we do, Tony, did, were you involved with Oliver getting, like, aware of that program, or?
Who, no. So we get, we get the notice every year, and we generally will just shoot it out to the students and say, hey, you know, this is out there. I mean, we do that with a lot of different opportunities that come up. Some students jump on certain things, and others, you know, don't. I think we've had in the past, other students apply, but no one's gotten as far as Oliver.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, obviously, it's, it's competitive, it's.
Yeah, it was like one of, I forgot what the, say, like, 5,000.
Out of Connecticut, right?
In our area. Yeah, yeah. In Connecticut alone.
Something silly.
Yeah, crazy amount of applicants. And he, you know, just kept kind of going up. And then it was a matter of, really, it ended up being a matter of making it work. Because we have to, he, he had to be unenrolled from the district, so he was a southern school, and then re-enrolled to come back, and then miss, you know, football. You know, he had to miss.
Right, this was, this was his first semester junior year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. He missed a bunch, but he was, he was into it. As you can tell, I mean, he's an amazing, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's exactly what we wanted to represent.
It's funny, like, after the first couple minutes, I'm thinking, Annapolis or West Point?
Yeah.
And then when it shot up on the screen there, I'm like, oh, okay, well.
And I think that was part of his motivation, too. Let me go and meet some people and, you know, see if I can connect. And, because you do need, you know, you need sponsors to get into some of those schools that he's hoping to get into.
Well, to, to have an opportunity to be with Chris.
Yeah.
How does that work? How, how did that program work with, like, credits? Because if he was only doing four academic classes, were you guys able to create, like?
Yeah, and that, and that was part of it, too, is, is before he even accepted, we looked at where he was. So he was already ahead, you know, in terms of the electives that he had taken. So really, you know, what was able to match there?
was able to match there kind of continued with what we had. So, you know, he would have taken two or three electives last semester, so he had to drop those, you know, and then he comes back and kind of continues with his courses and has been had.
Yeah, I'm assuming you have plenty of credits.
Yeah, he already, yeah. That was part of it. I mean, his parents were very specific, like, he can't go if, you know, he's not okay to continue on the path as you...
That's what, yeah, I was wondering how it compares, especially like a language, like if he's a kid taking a language and then he goes as hard, yeah?
Luckily for Oliver, he's already...
Right.
Class ahead in language, because he's a native speaker, so he was already way ahead.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So to improve your eye.
TA at one point.
I thought it was pretty interesting when he said he was the only representative in the past from the Hartford area, you know, out of Connecticut. That's the first time Hartford area represented.
That wouldn't surprise me, though. You would think that Fairfield County would have a lock on that.
Yes.
I guess that speaks to the nevotism piece of...
Yep.
Why he brought that up. Which I wasn't even, I didn't even think of that. I mean, we talked about it at a different point. It was like, everybody's connected to everybody.
They're all connected.
Well, now you're connected.
You learned the guy.
Now he's connected.
Yeah. No, that was excellent. Do we have any other opportunities for kids to get real-life experiences, to get credit for things like that?
There is the, the one that goes through the state, so that's that one. And we, I mean, we get opportunities that come through for different, for different pieces. And we're working, currently, I'm a part of the Bradley Board, the Bradley Regional Chamber of Commerce, and we're actually trying to connect, to find more experiences for our kids to do more of that. We were doing much more, I believe, prior to COVID, of course. Like, everybody always uses that as the kind of cutoff point, and now it's re-establishing some of that. But I can't speak to the exact ones because honestly, it hits my mailbox. I send it through the counselors, the counselors blast it to the students. The students can, you know, the ones that are really into it, jump on it, and the ones, you know, there's others.
Well, I guess your comment segues me to the next question about being involved with Bradley. Our manufacturing programs, do we offer aerospace in that as well?
Depending on what you mean by aerospace. So through our tech, through our, our technology program at school, we do have the drones program, so that's the closest to that.
With manufacturing aerospace companies around the Bradley area.
Yeah.
And so it'd be certainly a growing field.
Connected with, so this past year, we connected with Goodwin. I think you guys probably know about the Goodwin program. And there is internships available with them into some companies like that there. But it's more on the manufacturing side. And then we are re-establishing our connection with ACC that we had prior. We are now back connecting with them, but more for the welding aspect. But they have like a mechatronics and a robotics program. I think that leads into that side.
Okay.
Kids really, kids really want to get back into the welding program at ACC. It's just, they had to redo a bunch of what they had. And now they've changed it. So now it's more senior-based, and it doesn't come with as many of the, the high school components that it once had.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Now, can I get a motion for a German? Or John, another question?
You know, if Oliver was available to give a one-minute presentation and then introduce the superintendent tomorrow...
I was thinking of that, actually.
I think that would go such a long way to, to...
I could ask.
Whatever, whatever the case may be. But it would be nice if somehow, you know, all the community had an opportunity to meet the young man, or at least to find out about, you know, his experience. And it is, it's feather in the cap of the parents, feather in the cap of Oliver, but also the community and, and the system. So Tony, you know, the folks down the, the street there in South Manne, I give you guys a lot of credit for...
Thank you. I mean, you make us look good, right?
Doing wonderful. Absolutely.
Right. From K, pre-K, you know, we get them when they're good, so.
Well, I mean, that was impressive.
I'll move a German.
And I couldn't...
Okay, good. Do we have a second?
You can't even do that.
We can't.
Second from least. We can, we can.
Please, go.
That's right.
These are just sitting there.